The amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and ten cents for payrolls and liabilities for February twentieth. And payroll and claims for one hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-two cents for a total amount paid of four hundred and two thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the bills today? All right. I guess with that then, if there's no other business tonight, Stephen?
No.
All right, meeting adjourned.
I now call the March third, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would Councilmember Martinez lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And if it could remain standing after that, Kyle Larson will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to be here and to be meet as a council to help our city and to guide and direct its financial affairs. Father, we are thankful for the blessing of the moisture which we have received, the opportunity to serve and to help. We say this humbly, name thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, your honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am present, and I declare that we have a quorum. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Your honor, make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passed. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Your honor. Approval of the minutes, February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes, March third, two thousand and fifteen, finance committee meeting, approval of the finance committee recommendations for March third, two thousand and fifteen. And second reading on ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero four, read by title only. Rezone lots fifteen A and sixteen A, block twenty-five, original town of Riverton. Proposed ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero four, an ordinance amending zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezone of lot fifteen B, replat of lots fifteen A and sixteen A, block twenty-five. Original town of Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from B residential district to C one, commercial district.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
It's the recommendation of the finance committee for claims to be paid in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and ten cents. Checks for payroll and liabilities for February twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-two cents, for a total of four hundred and two thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-two cents.
I would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Your honor, I would...
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion necessary? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Consent agenda is passed. Next item is ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero two, third and final reading, rezone lots fifteen A and sixteen A, block twenty-five, original town of Riverton. Is that correct?
No.
That seems to be. So, looks like, looks like what we have is instead ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero two, which is an ordinance amending Title V business licenses.
Your honor, should we deal with fifteen, fifteen oh four, second reading, rezoning of fifteen A?
Point of order, your honor. I believe that was a second reading that was included in the consent agenda.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was in consent, okay, and so what we have is, is fifteen dash zero two, and on my script here, the titles is held over from last time. So, would the city clerk please read ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero two by title only?
Yes, your honor. Your honor, this is proposed ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero two on child care permit changes. An ordinance amending Title V business licenses and regulations to revise chapter five point zero eight, child care facilities, section five point zero eight point zero one zero definitions. Section five point zero eight point zero two zero, special use permit required. Section five point zero eight point zero four zero, application for special use permit. Section five point zero eight point zero six zero, submission of application, hearing on special use permit. Section five point zero eight point zero seven zero, issuance of a special use permit. Section five point zero eight point zero eight zero, term and renewal of special use permit. Section five point zero eight point zero nine zero, complaints and hearings. Section five point zero eight point one hundred, temporary special use permit of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero two on third and final reading.
So moved.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
Your honor. The change regarding the appeals process for that, I believe, was part of that. Complaints and hearings, I guess. What is that change specifically? Is it, was it just wording, changing the wording for special use? Okay, okay, all right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other questions or discussions about this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I thought we had to have a roll call.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry, it's a roll call today.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Yes.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Yes. That motion passes. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero three, third and final reading, home occupation permit changes. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero three by title only?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero three, an ordinance amending Title seventeen zoning to revise chapter seventeen point two zero accessory uses. Section seventeen point two zero point zero four zero, home occupation of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of ordinance fifteen dash zero zero three.
Your honor. I would move, I would move to approve ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero three on third reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those, oh, it's time for a roll call vote on that too, isn't it? Okay. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, your honor. Councilman, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Yes.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item is ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero five, third and final reading. Title V, chapter five point zero four, alcoholic beverages. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero five by title only?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero five, an ordinance amending Title V alcoholic beverages to revise chapter five point zero four. Sections five point zero four point one hundred, five point zero four point one five zero, five point zero four point one eight zero A five, five point zero four point two three zero B two and five. And five point zero four point two four zero B four of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of ordinance fifteen dash zero zero five on third and final reading.
Your honor.
Mr. Fabian.
I would move to approve ordinance fifteen dash zero zero five on third reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this ordinance change? Would the clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, your honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Yes.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Yes. I declare that that motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the force committee recommendation, neighborhood concrete repair projects. Could we have the public works directors report?
Yes, your honor. At the February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen force meeting, the committee recommends that the council approves advertising for three, forbid, excuse me, three neighborhood concrete projects. These projects are rendezvous, rendezvous school project, country club concrete repair project, and the Monroe Broadway concrete repair project. As a little bit of background, as many of you are aware, shortly after the force was organized, they requested staff would put together a list showing areas of disrepair throughout our city. As part of that process, staff identified areas of concrete that needed to be repaired. Subsequently, Inberg Miller engineers was hired to do engineering survey and prepare plans for Amislaney's concrete repair project. Of those plans, three schedules were developed, schedule one, two, and three. Last summer, schedules one and two were worked on during the Amislaney's concrete repair project. And this year, we'd like to continue that good work and localize these areas and repair some concrete that's in bad, bad state. So, as such, some of the lessons we learned from last year's project, and we'd like to remediate this year, is localizing some of these projects into one area and bidding them out. At the same time, if possible, we could also bid them out over periods of time in the summer and get more crews mobilized in different areas of the city and repair these sections of concrete. So, as we move forward, we're going to base these projects off of the Inberg Miller plans, but we will also, prior to a pre-bid meeting, go out and mark and verify areas that need to be repaired. Mark them by, basically by paint, going out with contractors interested in bidding the work during the pre-bid and verifying these areas should be worked on. Would have loved to do it today, but the snow just kind of stopped on that. We'd also like to put in our contract documents that the city reserves the right to increase or decrease the amount of concrete, plus or minus five percent, depending on need. And again, these projects and the areas wherein we're going to work is the neighborhood near the rendezvous school, the country club area, and Monroe Broadway. Respectively, these projects will cost four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, and four hundred and ten thousand dollars. As of today, or as of this last month, the one percent fund has two million one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in its account. Total, these three neighborhood concrete projects are estimated to total one million seventeen thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the force committee recommendation.
Your honor, make a motion that we approve the force committee recommendation?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We have any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Canaan.
Do any of these projects include the unfinished project that was going on last year?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Yes, that would include the Monroe Broadway area. The other two are actually part of schedule three, which were not included in last year's Amislaney's concrete project.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Will this coincide with the findings of the asphalt report at all, or are we? I just, I, I ask my question, should we wait for that report before we decide what concrete to repair? Or does it still make sense to go this route?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
No, this will not coincide with that study, since that study hasn't been completed, and it'll be a few months before that would happen. We know that there are certain areas that we have bad concrete because of the ASR issues we have in our aggregate. And so, I think we're pretty safe in going through and replacing these areas. We also know that Monroe and Broadway are in need of a resurfacing application. Moving forward, I would love to couple our concrete work with our asphalt work. We'll have to wait until we get the results of that stuff.
Your honor. Go ahead, Mr. Larson.
If we, when we look at Broadway and we look at Monroe, are we looking at the picture of industrial? Going up Monroe is heavier than, I would say, on Sixteenth or Sunset or somewhere like that. So, when we overlay that or repair it, are we doing it to a heavier requirement versus, say, just a passenger requirement?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Traffic counts and the use of the roads are considered when we do our asphalt rehabilitation projects, so that will be taken into account. And in fact, these concrete projects were sorted based off of traffic counts originally. Force wanted to get more bang for their buck for as many citizens as possible. So, schedules one and two were based highly off of use. And so, we know that Monroe, Broadway, they receive a lot of use. And staff is of the opinion that coming up shortly with the North Federal reconstruction, Broadway will have an increase in use. And therefore, this summer would be an ideal time to put at least a chip seal on it, provide a little bit more structural strength before we increase that traffic load. And that's something we'll work with the force with.
Thank you. And I would assume these numbers here are just the engineers' estimates? We haven't done bids yet, correct?
Your honor, that is correct.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
One other question. So, it looks like the city is planning to basically go out in a, I'm assuming, a mandatory pre-bid meeting and lay out the sections. Is that can also be transferred onto plans somehow, or, I mean, how are we putting this to the contractors so that they can bid it well?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
That pre-bid meeting will be required to attend, and what we would do is, we're going to use the investment we already have in those plans that have been prepared. But after that pre-bid meeting, we'll create an addendum to those plans and make sure that each contractor bidding on that work has sufficient knowledge and information about those areas prior to submitting their... Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the force committee recommendation for concrete work, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Say nay. Mayor votes aye, passes. The next item in business is resolution number thirteen twelve, Riverton Rendezvous Grant Application to Fremont County Recreation Board. Could we have the city clerk's report?
Yes, your honor. The Riverton Rendezvous Committee is very progressive with the grant application process. So far, we have applied for two grants and totaling eighteen seven, I believe. And so, this is a third and final grant that we'd like to apply for. This is a thirty-fifth balloon rally for this community, and so we're very excited about that. And for that event, we're going to be bringing in a couple of extra special shapes, which cost a little bit more money, because we do pay to have those balloons fly. So, this is simply the governing body's support of the grant application to the Fremont County Recreation Board by the Riverton Rendezvous Committee for thirty-one hundred dollars.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read resolution number thirteen twelve by title only?
Yes, your honor. Resolution number thirteen twelve, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Riverton, supporting a grant application from the Rendezvous Committee to the Fremont County Recreation Board for the thirty-fifth annual balloon rally.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of resolution thirteen twelve.
Your honor.
And Mr. Fabian.
I would move for approval of resolution thirteen twelve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Mayor votes aye, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of Daniel's Fund Grant Award for Skate Park. Could we have the city administrators' report?
Yes, your honor. We've got some exciting news. At the Central Wyoming Skateboarding Association, they applied for a grant with the Daniel's Fund. The Daniel's Funds was, was set up in honor of Bill Daniels to make life better for people in the communities of Colorado, New Mexico, Utah, and Wyoming. Guided by his compassion, Bill transferred his billion-dollar estate to form assets of the Daniel's Fund to carry forward his legacy of living. Initially, CWSA had applied using the Depot Foundation, but we found out later that they couldn't, with, with the type of requirements, the, the... Losing my train of thought here, sorry. The Depot Foundation was not able to, to accept those type of funds, and the Daniel's Fund wouldn't allow that funds to go to them. And so, they requested of the city that we be the fiscal agent and apply for these funds and get those, and so we agreed to that. The grant is structured that within thirty days of signing the agreement, the Daniel's Fund will send the city fifty thousand dollars. And so, once we, this gets approved tonight, and the mayor authorizes and signs that, we'll get fifty thousand dollars, and then there's a challenge portion that's an additional fifty thousand. CWSA can raise an additional fifty thousand from the date of when we sign the grant. Then the Daniel's Fund will transfer another fifty thousand to the city for the use of the skate park. A few points to point out with the grant, the grant period is from March first, two thousand and fifteen, to August thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. I, I know the Skateboard Association is aggressive in trying to, they have it on docket to start in June, so it doesn't look like that's going to be a time period problem, but if something were to come up, it could be extended. Grant is to be used exclusively for capital purposes in constructing a new skate park. Any unexpected, unexpended grant funds will be promptly returned. The city will maintain adequate financial records and retain for at least four years. And then the property is to be used in a manner described in the grant for a period of twenty years. If not, then the city would be required to repay that, and so by accepting the grant, we have some sense of this is where that skate park's going to be for twenty years, otherwise we'd have to pay that back. This really is a great opportunity for CWSA. They've been working hard in, in, in out there fundraising and getting other grants throughout the city and the county. They've worked hard for this, and I really feel that we're only fifty thousand short. Once we get that fifty thousand, the fifty thousand from the Daniel's Funds will have enough to start that project, and their goal is to start that on June seventeenth, I believe. And so... Thirteenth, sorry. So, staff recommendation is to accept this grant and authorize the mayor to sign it.
Thank you. Do you, do you want to, Matt, do you want to say anything about this, or you're just happy to be here? Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the Daniel's Fund grant for the skate park.
Motion to accept the grant from the Daniel's Fund.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your honor.
Go ahead, Mr.
Your honor, I guess my question is, again, excuse me if I don't have all the information on, how much are we spending on the skate park, or how much do they think it's going to cost for the skate park?
Your honor, I, I think their total is two hundred and seventy thousand, but I think it's, with in-kind matches, they're down to about two hundred and fifty-four thousand, is that right?
Mr. Wright, would you, would you come to the podium and use the microphone and, and that way the folks at home can hear, and we'll all be better informed. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, council. Appreciate your time. So, the question is, what is the project total? Bare bones, just the skate park itself, is, that goes to Dreamland, is two hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars. We set a goal from the initial, from the beginning, to raise two hundred and seventy thousand, knowing that there's extra costs, or we're already talking about money for sprinkler system. I believe there's some issues there. We'd love to have a walkway that honors our sponsors. We've, Bot Monument has talked about helping us with that. To have, you know, granite bricks for each sponsor who donate to the cause. And, and lights are a dream for us and the kids, so some extra funds there too, but two fifty-four five hundred is... is, is the, uh, full cost of the park.
And then, and then how much have we raised so far?
Two hundred and twenty thousand four hundred. I can give you a fundraising breakdown here. I've got it for everybody. Actually brought copies, so.
Okay, so, so I guess to follow up my question, so, so you already have two hundred and twenty raised?
Two hundred and twenty thousand four hundred.
And with this additional fifty, that gets us to the point where we have the full two seventy. So even if you didn't raise another fifty, you wouldn't have to get the other, the additional fifty? Is that how I understand it?
Seems that way.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so you do need to still raise fifty. Okay.
Thirty-four thou, you're, you're, you still need to raise thirty-four thousand dollars to make it work, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Your Honor, uh, I, I know, as he discussed, like benches and other types of things, that can be used as the one-and-one. Um, and so you have to raise that additional fifty to get the fifty from the Daniel's Fund. And so, um, I've encouraged, because there'll be unexpected costs that come up, or there'll be landscaping that needs to be done when they finish it off, or trees, or lights, benches, there's a lot of different things. Um, so I, I think we're moving forward and trying to raise that additional fifty, because we'd get that fifty returned.
Um, also, I'd love to mention, for those who are listening, um, in, uh, who own construction companies, um, it would dirt work, equipment, concrete, rock, wood, you know, the lumber, all of that, those are in-kind matches. And the Daniel's Fund has said if, or not in-kind matches, in-kind donations for construction towards the project, um, if, if those things are donated, those will count if we can prove that we're getting a discount or donation in those materials. So that was also dollar-for-dollar to go against the Daniel's Fund, to go towards the Daniel's Fund fifty thousand match.
Okay, thank you. Your Honor. Go ahead, Ms. Martinez.
Uh, I have a question, one question. Have you been to the Fremont County Rec Board for any help at all?
We have. They've, they've granted seven thousand, and we plan to, we've got the, uh, an additional seven thousand dollar grant in the works right now. So I think the deadline is coming up in a week or something like that.
Have a follow-up quick.
Go ahead.
I know the, uh, School District Twenty-Five Recreation Board has pledged thirty thousand dollars to you.
Correct.
Is that included in what, the total?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was, I guess, granted a couple of years ago, right? And we extended it once.
We extended it till two thousand, at the end of this year.
Right. And that's the whole idea is we, we, our organization, of course, we want to start the project. Um, Daniel's Fund, or excuse me, Dreamland Skate Parks, they've been building skate parks for thirty years. And it's very common for them to start a project in a first phase, so to speak. And, and then if so be that the funds don't arrive altogether, they design it so they can stop what they're doing and, and, uh, phase it out. So, and they, they leave it clean, they leave it still usable for the remainder of the year, and kids can still use it while we continue to fundraise. They come back a year later, finish the park. Um, and, and this design is set up to be that way. Um, so we'd like to start construction, because we'd hate to start giving grants back. And that's why we're setting date for construction under contract to build in June, June thirteenth. But understand that it's city land, so we have to have an agreement there. So.
Your Honor? Go ahead.
To, to what extent are you able to use local contractors in the process of constructing the park?
Um, I can certainly give you Mark Scott's number, Dreamland. Um, he, they do specialize in working with the community. That's one reason why we wanted to go with them. On, with that said though, I'm sure they don't want too many cooks in the kitchen, so to speak. I think, um, it is, skate, skate parks are an art form. Um, it's, it's fine sculpting. Uh, and there is construction plans, so I'm sure they could use, use help. But I, I'm not at liberty to say what they, they can use. Uh, they did give us a, a sheet where they can take, um, I know they can, they can take an excavator. They don't have to bring that out. That'll cost, that'll save some cost. Um, but as far as labor, I know they, they usually come sufficient with enough hands to, to get the park done in two and a half months, usually. Average, two to three months.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
One other thing. Um, so I'm assuming that all of the materials would be purchased locally then for it? And that, so they just bring in their specialists for actually sculpting the park and getting it?
Yes, yes. They, they've given us a spec sheet of their estimated cost. Um, concrete, for example, they want three hundred yards of four thousand P S A shotcrete. Um, and there's more, uh, details there, but that's seventy, thirty-seven thousand is their estimated cost for that much concrete. I talked to Mike Martin about that, and his eyes got really big and said, "Do you know how many trucks of concrete that is?" And, uh, so, and, um, so we're looking at, and, and they will, they'll have to bring, buy that locally, yes. So, and we're, we're hoping there'll be some, that, that number is actually less than what they can get it for when they're here. What we're hoping is that'll bring down the cost of, of the whole park.
I think our local contractors and, and suppliers are pretty, pretty generous to the community, so I would, would hope that we can expect some of that.
Well, this has been an amazing community effort so far, and we're incredibly grateful for Fremont County for supporting this so much. And I don't see it getting any, any worse.
That's great.
That's a bad way to put it, but.
I'm, I'm really impressed with the, uh, with the amount of money that you've been able to, to raise. It's, uh, it's quite a testament to your energy and drive to get that done for the Skate Park Association.
I would have given up a long time ago if the kids didn't, they come to meetings, show up for fundraisers. I've got a whole binder here of pictures of, uh, all the different things. The, the kids have been through it all. They've been doing it all with me, so. And I gotta shout out to Chris McNeil, our, our president, who's, uh, unfortunately, um, in Utah, and he's on his fourth treatment of chemotherapy coming soon. So he's, he's not doing too well. Um, but he's, he's, uh, he's as tough as they come. So we're, we're praying for him.
Thank you. Uh, we, we do have a motion, is that correct? Yes, we do have a motion. Okay? Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor.
The, uh, next item, uh, is Resolution Number Thirteen Fourteen, Master Plan Amendment, Honor Farm Property, Major Streets and Highways Plan. Could I have the Community Development Director's Report, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Several months ago, uh, council suggested that we amend our major streets and highways plan of our Riverton Master Plan to ensure that streets, um, to provide access, um, with the possible sale of a section of the Honor Farm Property north and east of Walmart, um, are provided. Staff researched the process, and we did work with the Planning Commission regarding a proposed layout. The streets were proposed on the corridor sections and connected with other corridor preservation lines on the master plan. Um, Plan Amendments is, uh, listed in, uh, it's a separate process in the master plan, and it allows us to do plan amendments on a small scale. We are working on updating the entire master plan, uh, which it should be done about every five years, and the Planning Commission is going through that at this time. But these are plan amendments, amendments that are allowed. Um, and, um, also state statutes, uh, allows that. Uh, the commission may amend, extend, or add to the plan or carry any part or subject matter into greater detail. And commission means the city's authorized planning commission. So we've used those, um, um, sections to, uh, allow us to go ahead and amend the master plan. The Planning Commission reviewed a map dated two, two fifteen, and I believe you have a copy of that, um, which was drawn with proposed future roads for corridor preservation. These street locations, they may be adjusted during the planning of the property, but they show that access, uh, needs to be designed into the plan. A motion was made to recommend approval of this map, amending the major streets and highways plan of the Riverton Master Plan by the Planning Commission. City Council may then approve the, a plan amendment if they make specific findings according to the following criteria. And this was what was listed in the, uh, in our master plan when it gave us direction on how to do plan amendments. And the following criteria, the proposed amendment has been official to the city and addresses issues not, uh, foreseen during the planning process. Proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding area and the goals and policies of this plan. The proposed amendment will address and mitigate impacts on transportation, services, and facilities. The proposed amendment will have minimal effect on service provision, including adequacy or availability of urban facilities and services, and is compatible with the existing and planned service, uh, provision. The proposed amendment is consistent with logical expansion of the urban services boundary area. The street adherence to the plan would result, the strict adherence to the plan would result in a situation neither intended nor in keeping with other goals and policies of the plan. And the proposed plan amendment will promote the public welfare and will be consistent with the goals and the policies of this plan. Now, staff does believe that this amendment does meet those, uh, criteria. And, uh, up here, I do show the area on this map, um, that we are talking about that, with the little proposed streets on it. Have any other questions?
Thank you. Are there, um, would the city clerk please read Resolution Number Thirteen Fourteen by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution Number Thirteen Fourteen, a resolution amending the major streets and highways plan of the February two thousand nine Riverton Master Plan.
Thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of Resolution Thirteen Fourteen.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve motion, or, uh, Resolution Thirteen Fourteen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Ms. Fabian.
My, my only question is, uh, the proposed width, um, of these roads, uh, as specified, does that, do the, do those match up with what our, um, city master plan? I know that there was some, something in there that they had recommended for changing our setbacks and different things. I'm wondering if this meets those updated setbacks, or if it's...
Y- Your Honor? Yes. Um, what we have done, uh, one of the streets going north and south, we have created as a subarterial, a proposed subarterial. And, uh, the other ones are proposed as, um, collector link, collector roads. And they are, I think those are the sixty-foot, basically, or sixty-foot right-of-way. Most all of those streets that we have proposed in there are sixty-foot right-oways, and the one is an eighty-foot.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a question. So this is, the, the master plan is not part of the city code, so we can amend it with just a resolution.
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead. Thank you. Any other questions about this? Uh, this is inside the city limits at the present time?
Y- Your Honor, yes.
End-zoned agriculture?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. Okay, council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Ms. Gibbon?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Larson?
Your Honor, I, uh, visited the, uh, Waste Management, uh, monthly meeting in Lander. And, uh, there's a lot of money being spent there, and, uh, reasons for it are many, but we have a federal government that desires that most garbage dumps, once they are set apart, are sterile, and there is no seepage, and that costs a lot of money. Six hundred thousand dollars a dump, small or big, all the same. Two boys, there's one of them, and, Shoshone is the second one. Third one is Pavilion. And that's a lot of money. So I plan on attending those and, uh, finding out more.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, uh, last night, we had the, uh, School District Twenty-Five, uh, Recreation Board meeting, and the only thing we accomplished last night is paid bills. The Board of Appeals met on, uh, I was at the twenty-third of February, and what we discussed was a proposed, uh, energy code. Pause for Life Board Meeting was on the eighteenth. Uh, the discussion of a rewording on the adoption form, discussion of a fundraiser with Central Wyoming Avery with the fifty-fifty split. And then on March twenty-first, at two, two P M., the senior, the Pause for Life, uh, are gonna have their annual pupcake and picture taken with the Easter Bunny at the Senior Center. And our next meeting will be eighteenth of this month.
Thank you. Ms. Fabian?
Um, I don't have anything committee-wise. I would just like to give kudos to the, uh, skateboarders, as well as the rendezvous for, uh, the hard work they're doing and getting, getting grants to help make our community better. Um, sincerely appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canaan.
Nothing, sir.
Nothing. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, again, I think kudos go out to the skate park folks. Uh, I think it's very admirable feat that they've raised a couple hundred thousand dollars already. I think that's amazing. Just shows the generosity of the people of this community, so. Um, also, I had the pleasure of touring the city facilities last week. I was very impressed with the, uh, amazing way those facilities all seem to be run. They look like they're run very efficiently. They're clean, they're well-kept. Um, I was, yeah, very educational day for me, so I was very impressed. And kudos go out to the city employees that were out bright and early this morning, uh, cleaning the roads. They all did a great job. I went through at six A M. and, you know, Maine and federal had already been hit. And, uh, so I think excellent job to them, so. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. City administrators' report.
Yes, Your Honor. A few things that we need to read in the record in regards to disclosure statements. So I, I just have to read everyone that turned one in, so it's in our minutes. So to comply with state statutes, the following individuals have completed signed disclosure statements. John L. Baker, Jonathan Fabian Lee Martinez, Martin Canaan, Kyle Larson, Holly Gibbon, Mike Bailey, Stephen Weaver, Courtney Bolander, Gloria Hardman, and Mia Harris. Um, also, on one of our catering permits that we, uh, issued, I believe, at our last council meeting, that one has been transferred. So this is a catering issued to Bar Ten for March twelfth, two thousand fifteen, for Paint and Party at two fourteen East Park from five P M. to ten P M. That has been transferred to May fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. Um, also, as a part of my weekly report, I sent out the city goals. Would encourage any feedback or comments related to the goals, so that we can, the plan is to adopt them at our March seventeenth meeting, which is, uh, two weeks from tonight. And so if you feel like the staff did a good job, I guess just let us know if you don't think we did, or we're off on the mark, let us know that too. Um, 'cause we can make adjustments. Uh, we did spend quite a bit of time with those. Um, also, our next work session next week will be Finance One-O-One. So if you wanna, it should be an, an exciting time to learn about the finances of the city. Um, and then, uh, the only other thing that I thought I'd bring up is, you know, Councilman Canaan had brought up the idea of maybe looking at changing codes in, in regards to design standards with roads. with roads. If, and I don't know if everybody's aware of the situation, but if, right now, with the design standards of any new development, they're required to put a half-street improvement on the, from property to property, not the south side. That's kind of an odd code, I think, in some ways, because what it sets up for is, you got a half-street improvement, and the other side's dirt. Typically, what I've seen in other cities is they call it a three-quarter street improvement, which means you have curb and gutter and sidewalk on the side that's being developed. And then, you have all the road put in, but then, on the, on the other side, the curb, gutter, and sidewalk would be put in as development occurs. That avoids the issue of this half-street and dirt on the other side, and what are you going to do with that? Ultimately, it ends up a lot of pressure to the city to put those in. And so, it may be something that the council wanted to consider to look at, that ordinance and changing that, and requiring more of a three-quarter street improvement, but I'll leave that up to the discussion of the council, if you want to direct staff to at least look at that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that three-quarter street improvement, would that give the person that actually developed it a recapture opportunity on the other side, or is that something that we could discuss, or?
Your Honor, yeah, that's something we could discuss. I mean, it could either be a recapture agreement or something that's required for them to do, but I can see where someone would say, that portion on the south side, why should I have to do that? Just because it hasn't been developed on the other side, but it avoids the confusion or problems in the future.
Well, we moved some more snow today, didn't we? That is, that is, we've had plenty of opportunities this year to test out different ways of plowing So, I do want to say that I did get, when we, when we actually did take a blade and run down Main Street on the, on the south side of the street, and peel the ice and snow away from the curb and gutter there, we got lots of compliments for having done that. So, plowing from the middle out works fine from the standpoint of getting, making headway, but at some later point in time, it seems like it's necessary to go back and get the curb and gutter picked up. But maybe once the streets are cleaned, you don't actually have to pick any snow up, you can just kind of spread it around and drive on until it goes away. I think that's, that's all I have to say. Once again, I'm impressed with the effort that the skateboard folks have put out, and they show up in all kinds of places and show off their skateboards and that type of thing. And so, then, I noted with the Daniels Fund that we have to keep that skateboard park used as a skateboard park for 20 years, and so then, I wonder, you know, my first thought was, will these guys still be skating in 20 years? And then, and then I think, probably, okay. So, and we'll probably recruit some new skaters. We don't need an executive session tonight, do we? I guess I would entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, and we are adjourned.